Recording in progress.
Advisory Committee meeting, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Ms. Spicer?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mayrow?
Here. Do have a quorum for the Budget Committee and everyone else on Budget Advisory Committee. This is a County Commission special session to take up this...
This is no budget.
No, that's right. There you go. We're in the Budget Hearing, Budget Advisory Committee meeting. In this, we have a public hearing on the budget at this point. I would look through the audience to raise your hands if you're here to speak on the budget. Anyone here to speak on the budget? There's a public hearing for the budgets. Anyone here to speak on the budget? Let the record show that there's no one here to speak on the budget. Next order of business is to review the budget, Budget Advisory Committee and Budget Committee, to consider any... You've had the budgets given to you. The Budget Committee has passed these on. So what we'll look for, if there's not any... If we'll give opportunity for discussion, but not any discussion, there'll be a vote to move this on to our regular session that will follow tonight at 7:00. Any questions for discussion on the budget? If there are no questions for discussion on the budget, we'll entertain from the Budget Committee a vote to approve the budget to move on to be considered by the County Commission at 7:00. Motion by Commissioner Williams. Have a second. Second by Commissioner Petty. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the Budget Committee? Open the floor for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Petty. All in favor of the Budget Committee adjourned, voting stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is adjourned. I adjourned the Budget Committee. At this point in time, we do have on here scheduled to go at 6:30, a special call session.
It's supposed to immediately follow this.
Okay.
I don't know, 6:40?
6:40.
6:40. Okay. We'll stay adjourned here for a few more minutes, six more minutes, and we'll come back in for the special meeting. It actually says on the agenda at 6:30, but we think we did say 6:40. So we'll leave an opportunity for any public that may want to show up to be a part of this for the next six minutes. So talk them in yourselves. Take a break.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Session for to hear the budget. Madam Clerk, could you call the floor, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Simkins?
Here.
Mr. Eby?
Here.
Mr. McElwain?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Ms. Spicer?
Here.
Mr. Buckner?
Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
We do have a quorum. First order of business is resolutions, appropriation of various departments, 2022, 2023 county budget. So what you just heard in budget, budget advisory committee. Open floor for a motion. A motion by Commissioner Hayes to have a second. Commissioner Spicer, thank you. Open floor for discussion or questions. Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is resolution to set the resolution fixing tax levy in Dixon County, Tennessee. As you'll see, that's attached on the second resolution. Shows property rate, property tax rate the same as it was last year, no increase. Open floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number three is appropriation resolution making appropriations to charitable organizations in Dixon County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1, ending July 30, 2023. This is what we've done in the past here. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hayes to have a second. Second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. That concludes the agenda for the special session. We'll seek a motion to adjourn and we'll come back to have our work session at seven o'clock. Have a motion adjourned. Commissioner Beatty, second. Commissioner Petty. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Work session to order. Before we pray tonight, there's a couple of things in particular brought to my attention today is the seventy-eighth anniversary of D-Day. Think you said on that, Johnny, there's forty-one hundred Americans killed that?
Forty-one hundred.
Yeah. That's an important day to remember. I appreciate Ms. Hayes bringing that up. The other one's come to mind, too, and not a very happy day in Dixon County government history, but Keith Beller was shot and died a day later. It was June sixth, two thousand and eleven. So before we pray, Dr. Weeks is going to pray for us. Let's remember those two unfortunate events. Dr. Weeks.
Father, we do thank you for opportunities to remember our past. Father, we thank you for the lessons that we've learned from those. We thank you for bringing us through those. We thank you for inspiration to look ahead and to look forward to better days. Father, tonight, as this commission comes together, I pray for them, pray for the decisions that they'll be making, pray for the information that's here to protect and watch over our county. Father, you've given us this place to live. You've given us to be stewards over it. We just ask that you protect our leadership ability. We just ask that you give wisdom and courage to make the right decisions in the best interest of all. Father, we just thank you for a gift of each and every day that you give to us. And we ask that you bless us and bless those around us. Is that your prayer name? Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Simkins?
Here.
Mr. Eby?
Here.
Mr. McElwain?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Ms. Spicer?
Here.
Mr. Buckner? Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
We do have a quorum. First order of business is approval of the May second, two thousand and twenty-two work session. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty, Dave Second. Second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed, thank you. Next time, business committee reports. Any committee report? Commissioner Simkins?
Uh, yes. Uh, we had our AIG meeting, committee meeting, and we added, correct me if I'm wrong, Hunter, Allison Harmon, right, to the office out there. She'll be doing some of the work Ms. Janet did and working alone with Hunter in that office. Also, he passed out a newsletter here that gives you a lot of good information of what's taking place out there in our four H in our, in our office, and we're proud, proud he's here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And also reminded out of that from Commissioner Simkins' delivery there, the viewing public has asked all of y'all to pull those microphones up and tie it because they said they hear me very well, but sometimes they don't hear y'all. So make that thing work for you. Make it your own. All right. Next, order of business appointments under sanitation board. We'd like to move that down to the next meeting. Individual on that, Ms. Ginger Brown, she, we want to make sure we contact her first before we offer that reappointment. So we'd like to put that on the July agenda. Next order of business is amendments. All funds except schools. Mr. Don Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, this is the final run for this month right here. I didn't send anything out because there will be a lot of changes from now to the next meeting, the final meeting. This one right here is, this is the final chapter for the year. So in the next two weeks, my staff and myself will be going through all the funds that we're responsible for other than schools. And the schools themselves, I know they'll be quite busy themselves. So you don't have anything to look at, but I do need you to send those, all these funds on to the next meeting because there will be a lot of changes between now and then anyway. So I didn't go ahead and send anything out, but I do need you to keep them open.
And I think most of y'all recall that what we're doing at this point, the budget is on amendments, is cleaning up line items, as county audit likes us to do. So it's nothing that changes the budget in any magnitude. It's just moving things and correct line items within the fiscal year.
Uh, making final adjustments is all we'll be after. Yeah.
Thank you. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hayes, second by Commissioner Williams. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Amendments number, second is amendments, all school funds, Board of Education representative, that'd be Dr. Danny Weeks.
Good evening, Commissioners. And first of all, let me say thank you for approving our budgets tonight and appreciate your consideration on those. Secondly, I'm, I'm gonna echo everything Mr. Hall just said, except you do have an amended budget from the school system. The document that we sent to you via email, the final column of that does have our amended numbers. And again, we've, we've looked through and finalized those documents. So we, we don't anticipate any further changes. So the items that you see at that point in time, as Mr. Hall said, it doesn't change the budget in any way. It just kind of squares up some line items that may have been either over, particularly with fuel budgets for our buses. So bring those to you this evening for those amendments.
Open the floor for a motion, and then we'll open for questions. Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Hayes. We do have a proper motion and second. Any questions for Dr. Weeks?
Yeah, I have one. Uh, Dr. Weeks, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for the schools and everything. And I know we've already approved your budget and everything, but you know, I was doing some calculations and I know the, the teachers are getting a fifteen hundred dollar a year raise.
Yes.
Is that correct? I really wish that you would consider looking at your budget, maybe giving them another fifteen hundred dollar raise because it's barely cost of living for them. And I'm really concerned about teachers leaving. And I know every time we come up with a budget, everybody on this, all the commissioners say, you know, teachers need more money. And I agree with that. They really do. So I wish you would, I know we passed your budget, but I wish you would consider looking at that, especially considering it's a seventy-five million dollar budget, that maybe we could find some additional money to give teachers an additional raise. I'd appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Eby. And I will share that with my board. And if they take any action on that, I'll be back to see you guys.
Thank you. Any other questions, Dr. Weeks? Please. Sure. I like you that well.
Anytime, sir.
What we've been witnessing here in the last few weeks with some school shootings, are we adequate on what we're doing? I mean, I know we're gonna put in another out here at Creekwood like we did at Dixon County High School. And, you know, I was just, just wondering where you're at and what you think the needs are.
Well, thank you for the question. And again, school safety and security, I mean, our, our main focus is education, but certainly that takes our focus from behind the scenes. If our students and our staff aren't safe at school, it doesn't matter what else we do. So I'm gonna go back and, and again, thank you as commissioners, because many of you were on the commission. I guess it's been probably seven years ago now when we had project cooperation and we, we improved the entrances and the locked doors at all of our schools. And we provided a secure entrances so that everybody does have to come through that door. You mentioned the project that we're, we're currently constructing at Creekwood High School, which will basically close the back entrance to all traffic starting first day of school. I think we'll, we'll see that open. We, we constantly are evaluating our plans and, you know, our, our plans are protected under state law from being publicized. So, so those plans are reviewed regularly and the student resource officers, the school resource officers, that are joint projects between the city of Dixon and the sheriff's office. We do have officers at every building. We're thankful for that. And I think we're ahead of many districts that do not have that. We will certainly be reviewing our protocols, you know, with all of our staff because we, we heard some unfortunate accusations that were made and whether they were true or not. And in the Texas situation, we know what our expectations are. So it's, it's heightening that awareness. We have had some conversations already with, with principals about what, what our first week of school may look like. During COVID, we basically had our doors closed to any outside guests, you know, because of COVID situations. And we're certainly considering that of only allowing those with a specific purpose in our buildings for the fall. And that, that's a change from the way we've typically done business, but, but certainly we're in unprecedented times. And we're gonna make decisions that are in the best interest of our schools and our staff. And sometimes those aren't popular decisions, but we're, we're gonna do the right thing. You know, we, we're currently evaluating, again, our school plans and our SROs, the, the State Department of Education has Homeland Security and other, other individuals that help give us those templates and those forms that we go through to, to make those decisions. We're also looking at our camera systems to, to help decide if those are, are adequate or if we're gonna need some additional resources for those. But overall, I feel good. But you know, you never wanna, never wanna say it can't happen here because we, we know it could. Appreciate that question.
Thank you. If we can, and I appreciate your question, let's take care of this item. And then if you have additional questions, Dr. Weeks will move on. So this is amendment, move of amendments, as Dr. Weeks described, on all school funds to the regular session. Had a, a motion by Commissioner Reed and second by Commissioner Hayes. Any other questions or comments on that item? Okay. On that item, hearing no, further questions. All in favor of moving this to the regular session, vote with stating aye. Opposed, thank you. Please.
Have you, I know it was being discussed, has it been finalized that the, what I call the Sullivan School is going to be ninth grade next year?
Yes, ma'am. The, the board took action in their April session to, to rezone students from Sullivan Central back out to the, the other city schools. So.
My question is, are you going to move the guard shack down to, before you get to the Sullivan School then?
Uh, the Welcome Center is not capable of being moved. So we're discussing what the flow of traffic is gonna look like through that section.
Okay.
Again, specific security plans aren't publicized, but, you know, we know the majority of our, since, since that will be a freshman campus, we know the majority of freshmen do not drive at least the first semester of school. So we're, we're looking at how we might address that.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, because I wasn't sure you, it had actually happened that you'd voted on the change.
It has.
But I, I was wondering about how you're gonna handle that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Dr. Weeks, have y'all, have y'all done through the process and how you're gonna do all this? Or was that, are you having it like the school board or, or how are you gonna come up with your final decision? Where, what you going to do?
With the safety plans.
Yeah. I mean, as far as your guards and what do you, I mean, you know, pertaining to the school safety.
Yes, sir. The, the SROs are in every school. So, so that is, that's a combination, again, of the efforts between the sheriff's office, Dixon County, or Dixon City Police Department. They, they sponsor some, some SROs for us. Of course, our regular budget has SROs and that as well. The other safety plans, we're required by the state of Tennessee to evaluate a safety plan and submit that every year. It's due no later than, I think, the first of September. And so that will be a big part of our return to school and services for the upcoming year.
Yeah. Well, does state Tennessee got a rule of thumb that, that you're gonna have to follow? I mean, are they gonna have a sort of a regular thing for all the schools in state Tennessee?
I.
Or are they gonna let each one of them individually figure out their own security?
Each building is unique. So each, each individual school has their own plan. Now, there are certain guidelines that the states will impose upon us. And I just received an email while y'all were on break that Governor Lee signed an executive order regarding school safety today. I'm not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but what is he, what is he referring to? I mean, what's he signing? I mean, you can say I'm gonna have it, you know, whatever, just like your guard shack at the bottom of the hill. See, if somebody come up the, Jones screen, come in the back and they pack theirself in, it wouldn't help you none. It'd be on the school grounds.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'd, I'd like to know myself what you gonna, what the final plan, what you gonna, you know, there's a lot of people ask me, you know.
Yes, sir. And, and again, those specific plans are protected under state law that, that we don't discuss those because, you know, as soon as you put a plan out there, somebody's gonna figure out how to work their way around that. So, you know, the, the, the places that cameras are, the locations of types of things of that nature, what procedures that teachers follow and staff follow, those are protected under state law so that those are not disclosed. And then again, our, our board meets regularly and we, you know, basically quarterly review those plans. Every school has their own plan and it's submitted to the state of Tennessee and the state approves those or, or sends those back with suggested revisions.
So you'd want a camera out there and, and the public not knowing it was there. So you're just trying to catch the, the culprit instead of keeping him away? Because it would be a deterrent to me if you advertised, I got cameras all over the school and I, I got this and I got that, even, even if it was a frost, false deal. I mean, you know, then the people that think, well, they got cameras there, I can't go in, you know?
We, we do have several cameras. I will put it that way.
Yeah. Well, so there ain't no way that, that, that one of the commissioners could or all of us could see what you're doing?
I'd be glad to individually meet with you if, if you'd like to at any point in time. Yes, sir. We'd be glad to show you around and any school that you're interested in.
All right. I thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know you've got a guard shack going up Creekwood. I can dig. I call it a guard shack.
We like the term Welcome Center.
Okay. Okay. I call it a guard shack. What about for the other schools?
Well, the.
Has that, has that been discussed or?
It, it has not. The, the, the main emphasis on our Welcome Centers are, are those large campuses which cannot be secured. And I'm gonna go back to Dixon County High School. You know, you're looking at four buildings up on there and students often exchange between those parts of the buildings by going outside. And so when we were looking at project cooperation those seven years ago, we, you know, we, we just really struggled with how do you secure a campus other than building a big fence around it?
Right.
Uh, put a big fence around it, to me, it looks like a jail. And, you know, we, we really want to protect that school culture and make students feel welcome and people welcome, but to provide that safety at the same point in time. And so all accesses to campus are closed except through that one Welcome Center gate. And again, people that come through there, including my staff, we stop, we're checked in.
Yeah.
We're assigned a specific parking place and given a specific door to go to. And, you know.
That was elementary school in Texas.
Yes, sir. And, and those, you know, again, you know, we can talk about securing outside doors and securing fences and things like that, you know, and, and being in general in conversation as we, as we can without going into specifics. But our teachers have been under the practice of teaching with their doors closed and doors locked, which again is.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's different, but, but they have, they have gone through that expectation, I guess, particularly since Sandy Hook. And so that's been an expectation that, that they do have their doors closed and their doors locked. And again, it's an inconvenience for a lot of places, but sometimes we have to go through a little inconvenience to make sure our plans are safe. So again, those are things that will be reemphasized to teachers and reemphasized as we start the school year. Thank you.
So I guess that means air conditioning works?
Yes, ma'am.
I can't tell you how many years it took for that to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
We used to have to prop the doors open to survive.
Well, we, we are thankful for, for air conditioning in our schools as well as in the gymnasium. We, we had an event, end of the year banquet in the gym at Dixon County High School, and it was very comfortable in there.
And I appreciate you, though, what you've done for our blood. I'll tell you that.
Thank you, sir. And again, we couldn't do that without your support as well. So it, it's not, it's not something my office is doing.
I have one more question. In lieu of the president's executive order on the school nutrition program, or you're aware of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
What, how, how are we gonna, do we know how we're gonna handle that or?
Well, it, it's, you know, it, it's a difficult situation. And we knew when, when they started that, you know, you go give people free lunches and free breakfast for two years, and then all of a sudden you tell them, you know, start paying for it again. So those, those families that are gonna be eligible for that, our school nutrition department, you know, again, the eligibility is still there for the families that need it. It's simply a matter of filling out a form and having that form verified now. So it's, it's a process, though, to, you know, there's some people just have a hard time filling out those forms. So we, we talked about it at our, our last staff meeting. We talked about just emailing that to every family and then having those that are eligible signing in and returning it. But again, you're talking about students going through that process, but it is difficult.
But I'm talking about where the president's tying that to the transgender stuff at the schools. You know, are you aware of that?
No, sir. I'm not.
And I, I had Mark Green on my show a couple of weeks ago, and we, I asked him about that, and he said, yeah, it's true. And their office is working on it. But you might want to look into that because according to the executive order, the nutrition program's gonna be tied to allowing the transgenderism, you know, available to all, you know, boys in the girls locker rooms, vice versa. So we probably need to look into that because I don't know, I know some states are probably gonna be following suit on that, but, you know, I don't know how that's gonna affect us this year, i- if at all. I don't know.
Okay.
But it'd be something to look into. Thanks.
I've heard that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weeks.
Thank you.
Next item of business, highway capital outlet note, Mr. Hall.
Number three is just the capital outlay notes for some equipment we got for the highway department. It's a John Deere tractor, Ford F-three-fifty, one-ton shop truck. The new shop area has a fuel system with system controls and some three snow plows. And the number four is for the landfill. They got a, a twenty-twenty-one Komatsu wheel loader. So that's basically all those were capital outlay notes. I don't remember if they were, I think we may, one of them may have been a three-year note and one the five-year. And I think the highway was the five-year. Do you remember, Mayor?
I think we did three and three.
Three and three.
Regardless, they fit into the budget. These aren't budgeted items. We're just now funding these.
Yeah.
At the end of the fiscal year on that.
So that's just to give you the information on what we did purchase. And that's updating a good bit of, of, uh, equipment for the highway and landfill.
These are two separate items that we had to vote on those separately.
Yeah.
Well, the first one's highway capital outlet note. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed, thank you. Item number four, solid waste capital outlay note. Any, open the floor for a motion, second on that, motion by Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Hall's been under the weather, so he's been working on the budget, doing all this. So thank them, but don't get near them. So. We had, I've had a request to add an item tonight from Commissioner Williams, speed limit on Reap Road. You were requesting it be viewed by the sheriff's department, highway department. You were thinking thirty miles an hour?
Yeah, that's what the request was, if we could have, have them to look at it.
Okay. Thank you. There's Mr. Hodges. There's Teddy Murphy. Thank you. If y'all will take a look at that and be ready to report back to us in two weeks and we'll make that decision. Thank you. Any other agenda items need be added? Then I have one here that came up since we sent the agenda out last week. If you check the news or Facebook or wherever you get your news, Representative Curcio resigned from the State House of Representatives of District sixty-nine on May thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. By law, when you have a resignation of this, the commission, the county that has the commissioner or the representative domicile has an opportunity to, to fill that position. By law, we have a hundred and twenty days to fill the vacancy. The individual appointed to fill the vacancy will then serve until the successor is elected in the November election. If we want to go forward with filling that, we have some basic rules that we would like to bring forward. They're gonna sound very familiar to you because it's the exact same way we fill a empty commission seat. But there are a little bit different qualifications for a state representative seat. Rules and procedures to fill a vacancy by the Dixon County Commission created by the resignation of State Representative Michael Curcio. The county mayor, chair of the county commission, will publish a notice running local papers not less than seven days prior to the June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the county commission notifying the public of the meeting and the vacancy to be filled at that meeting. At the June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, registered voters at the sixty-ninth House District will be allowed to submit names for consideration. Once the chair of the county commission closes the portion of the meeting in which the public is to allow to submit names, the chair will then accept nominations from county commissioners. Any commissioner may submit more than one nomination, and nominations do not have to be seconded. If a citizen submits a name that is not included, if a citizen submits a name that is not included in the nominations made by the commissioners, then the name submitted by the citizen is not to be considered. If a person nominated is not present, the county commissioner making the nomination must submit a signed statement from the nominee that the nominee is willing to serve. If a signed statement is not presented prior to the initial vote of the nominee, then such nominee will not be considered. Each nominee in order to be considered for the vacancy in the sixty-ninth district of the Tennessee House of Representatives must be a U.S. citizen, twenty-one years of age, a resident of the state of Tennessee for three years immediately preceding the, the date of appointment, a resident of Dixon, Hickman or Murray County for one year immediately preceding the date of the appointment, a qualified voter of the sixty-ninth House District as of date of the appointment. The following situations would eliminate the candidate from qualifying for office. Those who have been convicted or offering or giving bribe or larceny or any offense declared infamous by law unless restored citizenship is mo- is in the mode pointed out by the law. Those agents whom there is judgment unpaid for any monies received by them in any official capacity due to the United States, to this state, or any county thereof. Those who are defaulters to the treasury at the time of the election, election of any such person shall be voided. Soldiers, seamen, marines, or airmen in the regular army or navy or Air Force of the United States, and members of Congress and persons holding any office of profit or trust under the, any foreign power, other state of the union, or the United States. Once the county commission vote to cease all further nominations, the eligible nominee will be given an opportunity to address the county commission for a period of time to be established by the chair based on the number of nominees. After each nominee has begun an opportunity to address the county commission, the commission will then vote to fill the vacancy. The voting process will be as follows. Each commissioner will state the name of the person that he or she supports to fill the vacancy. If a person nominated receives six or more votes on the initial ballot, that person will be selected to fill the vacancy. Well, that'd be six or seven. That should be seven because it's not a vacant commission. It takes the majority of the commission. So let me read that one again. If a person nominated receives seven or more votes on the initial ballot, then that person is selected to fill the vacancy. If no person receives seven or more votes, then any nominee receiving no votes and the nominee receiving the fewest votes will be eliminated from consideration. If more than one nominee receives the fewest votes, meaning that they are tied for the fewest votes, and/or the elimination of the nominee receiving the fewest votes would leave only one remaining nominee who received less than seven votes, the nominees receiving the fewest votes will remain eligible for the next round to fill the voting vacancy. The county commission will then go through the same process again until a nominee receives seven votes or more. If a nominee has not received seven or more votes after two rounds of voting, the county commission will take a brief recess during which time the county commissioners may discuss or deliberate among themselves regarding the nominees or voting. If the county commission is unable to achieve at least seven votes for the nominee after a third vote, then at that time or after a subsequent vote, any member of the county commission may make a motion to postpone the vote to the date certain in the future to be established by a vote of not less than seven in favor of the motion. That brings a lot of those. We will get these rules out to you. I want to point now, I'd be glad to answer any questions. But if you've been through a nominating process and we've, and I think several of y'all have been now, when we had a commission seat vacant, it's the same process. The things that were additional to this were the additional requirements to be a state representative. And the change versus six votes, it has to be seven votes because it's not a, it's a majority of the body. So it's not, we'd have all commissioners available on that. So that is the public notice I'm required to get by law of the vacant seat Mr. Curcio left. That are rules to fill that. I'll open the floor for any questions or discussion. Yes.
Since it is a partisan position, does it have to be the same party that's in there now or?
It's the will of the commission.
Okay.
Whenever the election is, just till November, right?
Yes, it'd be from.
Which, in a sense, in a sense, the. Which, in a sense, in a sense, the legislature's not officially in session during that time, unless there's a call session.
That's true. And that, that would be, my one major concern is that if the, the governor has called special sessions, it would be the best thing to have all of the Dixon County seats filled and be available to vote to share our community's interests and, in this case, the interests of the sixty-nine district, which includes Lewis and Murray County. At this point, if we're gonna go forward with this, those are the rules. Uh, what I'd like to get at this point in time is a motion, a second, to agree to those rules and let's put this on the agenda for June twentieth to fill that. Motion by Commissioner Hayes, second by Commissioner Williams and many others. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed, thank you. That way, uh, we will put the notice in the paper, uh, that this will be more than likely, if we not able to get it in the seven days and the local papers will publish it in Tennessee, because it's a data circulated play, paper in Dixon, Hickman, and Murray County that for the, what the seat is being vacated for. Thank you, yes.
When is it we're gonna vote on this, I'm not exactly clear.
The next meeting, June twentieth.
Okay, wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Any other questions on this issue? Thank you. Any other business from Commissioners to be brought up? Commissioner Beatty had one that he gave me, Harpitz Ridge Fire Department, is chickens or fish? Chicken.
The twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth of June.
Of June.
Cool. Any other events? Yes, can.
I would like to ask, how's Mr. Harpitz doing?
Great, when you see him, ask him for space for me. Okay, I did, I, I talked to him. Okay.
We don't have any birth dates, so everybody looks out there and clear, Commissioner Hayes, did we miss anybody's birthday?
Second, I forgot to look. I'm getting older by the month, you know, so.
Well, most of y'all know our maintenance director, Mr. W.H. Beatty, if you see him, his, it's like his birthday, it's gonna be on the sixteenth of this month. So I know we all wanna wish Mr. Beatty happy birthday. Uh, he and his staff, if you may have not noticed because the changes are subtle in here, have done some, uh, updating the, some of those white spots are gone, the seats, we've, you got a nice little case of stain and varnish in here. You've got just some new, uh, window treatments there, uh, so his staff and they've done, done that, kinda cleaned up in here. So, uh, his staff, uh, have done an excellent job, so he gets a special birthday present this year.
On the birthday, the only one I have is, I don't have any for June, uh, but July will be Dwight McElhane.
Does. And I, because it's out of order, we'll also special celebrate on, uh, July fifth, uh, Mr. Beatty's birthday.
Oh, okay.
Although we won't be here to celebrate it. And that is the point that Commissioner Ellis brought up, so here's the final announcement. Uh, we will have the next work session on Monday, June twentieth. It will immediately follow the June County Commission meeting. So the work, we're having a county commission on June twentieth, we're having a July work session also on the twentieth. Uh, so that way we're getting off that July fifth holiday or July fourth holiday, uh, out of that week. So again, the next work session will be on Monday, June twentieth, immediately following the June Commission meeting at seven P.M. The Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber, the Dixon County Administration Building, Four Quirks Square, Charlotte, Tennessee. Have a motion, second adjourned, thank you.